So our first item is consideration of routine items. It's recommended that the agenda of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
I so move that we accept the agenda of the February thirteenth regular meeting as presented.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. It's recommended that the minutes of the January ninth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
A motion.
And a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. There were no statements from the public, so we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Very happy and excited tonight to have two guests that we'd like to recognize. At this time, the head girls' basketball coach of the South Spencer Lady Rebels. Please welcome Mr. Brent Matthew.
Thank you. I'll take my mask off before Trinity comes down. I'm fighting a sinus infection, so please forgive me, but I'm real happy that y'all asked us to come up. It's our first time in five years to get to come up afterwards, and it's a pleasure to do so. This group of senior kids has been in our program for four years, and they've won forty-eight ballgames in four years. The first year was four, then ten, then sixteen, and then seventeen. So they were a part of a building program, a changing of everything, to a program that we can all be proud of. And others that graduated last year, the year before, and the year before that were a part of it also. But these were the kids that went four straight years in this rebuild. And to give you some idea of this basketball team, the state of Indiana offers individuals that have an A-B average, an opportunity to be all-state academic. They also offer to entire teams if the entire team has an A-B average. And we were able to submit our entire basketball team this year. We're waiting to hear the results of that. But that's quite an accomplishment for these kids, from freshmen all the way through seniors, nothing but As and Bs for this entire year, as well as most of them are going to play three sports. All of them play at least two sports here, plus travel sports in other ways. We have two of our seniors, Trinity and Sophie, that are going to play college basketball next year. Trent, help me out. Sophie's college is?
Illinois Tech.
Illinois Tech. It's in Chicago. And Trinity is going to... Don't... Asbury University. And thank you, Minnit, for that scholarship. And we're very excited for both of them. Our coaches have already got together, waiting to see their schedules so we can go watch them play. If Sophie could come this way a little bit, it would help. But Trinity is right in line with the best Japanese restaurant, Lexington, and that's a given fact for that. But these kids, four years ago, bit in on a philosophy that we had, and it wasn't for everybody. And not everybody made it all the way through. Last year's two seniors went all the way through four years, and the year before that was three, and the year before that was two. But these kids decided they wanted something more at South Spencer than what had been done in the past, or different. I'll put it that way, different than what it was in the past. And their work ethic, I don't think there's one time in four years that we ever said, "You're not giving us enough effort," in practices or in a game. It always wasn't the results we would like to have, but such is life, as far as that goes. We broke four school records this year. The same young lady broke all four of them. But it's been just a magic year. Last year, we got beat by the state champion in two A. And unless something crazy happens, we got beat again by the state champion this year at Forest Park. I don't see anybody getting in their way of winning a second back-to-back. But they gave everything they had, every chance we had. We battled illness and injuries and everything else, and it was just the next person up when it come time to play. In our first game, we had four people out. We started two freshmen that had never been on the floor before and beat Princeton by nineteen points, and Princeton just almost beat Gibson Southern in the regional ceremony. So these kids have so much to remember and so much to be proud of, all the way down to Kelsey Carmen's victory dance that she does. Get on YouTube, you'll see it, you know, somewhere, because she's a character. But at this time, I'd like to ask Trinity to come up, and I'll put my mask back on, because I don't want to get her sick. In four years, this young lady has never missed a basketball game. She set a school record playing in ninety-four games. That's never been done, and it's going to be a long time before somebody does, because nobody in school right now has done that. It would have to be an incoming freshman that would have a chance to tie her or go ahead. She is number one in girls' points at twelve hundred and forty-eight. She's number one in career three-point field goals made, a hundred and sixty-four. She's number one in free throws made, three hundred and four. And then she's number one in the most games ever played in a high school career. She has the most free throws made in a single game, fifteen. I think it was fifteen or sixteen, whatever. Yep. She had the most three points made in a season, that was fifty-one. She's second career field goals made, with three hundred and seventy-eight. Second in single-game steals, she had nine twice to tie that record, to be second. She's third in single-season free throws made, she had a hundred and one free throws. She's third in single-season points, three hundred and eighty. And she's third in career assists at three hundred and seven. So to score twelve hundred and forty-eight points and still get three hundred assists, you know, that's another six hundred or nine hundred if there were threes that this young lady has accounted for. She made the first team on P A C this year. That's the first young lady that I've had. I don't know if there was somebody before. God, maybe you guys or somebody. I don't know. She was honorable mention her sophomore year. She was second-team her junior year, which she should have been first. And she was first-team this year. It's not out publicly yet, so please don't go out. And she got the fourth-most votes of anybody in the P A C. She ranked number four. She's made the All-Southwest Indiana Team in twenty-two and twenty-three. H B C A is a coaches' network. She was a Region Two All-Star this year. She was H B C A Region Two All District this year. And she's been nominated, and we haven't heard yet. It's another coaching group. It's the I C G S A. I have no clue what it stands for, but she's nominated for All-State this year and nominated in the I B C A All-State this year. Just an incredible young lady. She leads us in our prayers before games. When we eat out, she leads our team in prayers, and it's something we stress a lot. And you just can't say enough... I guess what you'd want to say is, "She's the young lady." You'd hope that your boy would bring home and say, "Hey, Mama, Dad, I want you to meet this young lady." She's just a doll, and they're going to miss her here. But she'll be an outstanding player at Asbury University also. They do mission work, right? Where's that going to be?
Puerto Rico.
Puerto Rico. They also take a team trip. Where's that at? Boca Raton. She has service hours that she has to do for that, and is looking forward to absolutely all of it. And she's going to represent this school with the utmost dignity that I have no doubt. And please like her, certainly for this time. Anything you want to say?
Sure.
Can you go over there?
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you to my coaches, the whole staff at South Spencer, and everyone in the community who has supported my teammates and I through the last four seasons. We really appreciated it. You know how important it is for all of us to see, you know, smiling, cheering faces in the stands. And also, I wanted to say that I've loved every second here at South Spencer, and I can't wait for the next four years at college, and I'm very thankful that God has given me the opportunity to play at the next level. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, Trinity?
Just echo what Coach Matthew said about Trinity, the way the girls play, the way they represent our school, our community, first class all the way, all the time. And to lose to the defending two-A state champions on their own court, and it was a one-point game at half, so they have a lot to be proud of. I know they would have loved to have been cutting those nets down, but they had a fantastic season, and as I said, they represented South Spencer in an outstanding manner. So Trinity, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Anything else on the report?
Well, just we'll remind everyone, at our March meeting, we'll be giving a presentation on our strategic plan for the South Spencer School Corporation. This has been the works for over a year. Teachers, administrators have done a lot of work, a lot of discussion. I think we've got a great plan as to how we're going to move forward. So we're looking forward to sharing that in March. And after we share it with the board, we'll share it with the teachers this Friday, share it with the board in March, and look to share it with community members, and then start implementing it. And we're already working on it, just tell you that. Just looking forward. It's a very exciting time. That's all I have for the seat.
Okay, thank you. So now we move on to the consent items. Number one, approve the payroll claim dockets and the accounts payable claims numbered thirty-seven to one sixty-five. Number two, approve the treasurer's financial report. Number three, accept the resignation of the following. Approve to post the positions and grant permission to hire. First one is Donna Alvey, South Spencer High School Head Cook, effective January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Then Ashley Massinic, Loose Elementary Teacher's Aid, effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Chastity Goodwin, Loose Elementary Cook, effective February tenth, twenty twenty-three. Maddie Brown, South Spencer Middle School Track Coach, effective February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And Caleb Grave Meyer, South Spencer Middle School Seventh Grade Volleyball Coach, effective February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion to approve these consent items?
A motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by George, any discussion?
Under line item number three, we have here grant permission to hire. We talked about that over the last couple of meetings. Are we in agreement that what that saying is, is as the superintendent, principals, administrators make the said recommendation that that is the hire, and that we will not have them on a future board meeting for the board to approve? So there's that area between the point when they start employment and they're working, and then they face board approval? And if so, I'm fine with that, but I want it to be clarified before we take a vote.
I think that we agree that if we would be notified first, before they actually start...
Okay. So if there's something that comes up, how, what's the process there? Should there be concerns of the board? So if we're notified, and let's say that this person is a red flag for some reason to several of the board members, what's the processes there?
Then I would say contact myself if it's something that we missed through the hiring process.
Okay.
That's absolutely...
Clarification?
Yes. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have consideration of administrator recommendations. Number one, Mr. Snyder?
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a request to increase the health aide position at Loose Elementary from seven hours a day to eight hours a day, effective immediately. The request for additional hours to provide additional time to meet the medical needs of students and the school. Loose has seen an increase in the number of students with serious health concerns that simply require additional time and attention. The hourly rate for this position will not change. I recommend the board approve the request as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion by George, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler. Any discussion?
I do have discussion on this one. I sent a email to Mr. Snyder and to Janet about this position, and I don't have a problem with the individual, the increase in hours. But I also think I ask for what we had in terms of cases and numbers of last year compared to this year, so that we can make a good financial decision in the middle of a school year. And the reason why that's of value from my perspective is there are several other people in similar positions throughout our corporation, and I don't want to start a precedent in the middle of a school year, making changes to people's rates and wages when you have bus drivers and cooks and custodians and teachers aides and all those different things that said, "Hey, I do this extra and I don't get paid for it. Where's my, where's my apple, or where's my cookie?" So my question is, is my thoughts on this, I'm okay with moving forward with this, but I personally feel we should table it a month to get those statistics so that we can verify what is being asked for is adequate for the position. And what I mean by that is, there were several things that were listed in the board packet that were stuff that happens in the future, next year, when they get a student that's coming into Loose. But we're going to start paying that position now. And then there's other positions where it lists that they take care of these great, I mean, all of those people in those positions that administer medication and so forth are fantastic. But I think we need to make sure that we're not jumping out in front of the horse and cart to do for one without considering the other buildings and the other people within our corporation. That's my thoughts, yeah.
And Mrs. Adams did provide some rationale that I shared with the board.
She did.
And she is looking, she's trying to look through last year's records, but she can talk about the kids that are on, that are on meds that require special attention. It's more than doubled from last year to this year. Asthma kids has increased. So when we talk about the serious health concerns, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
And for us to have an additional hour of coverage is, I think, is very justified for one, and I think it provides another layer of safety for those students. And next year, we will have some others.
What's the, what's the, what's the numbers for Rockport Elementary and the middle school in those same positions? Are they, are they the same? Are they going down? Are they up? Where are they? Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't have a problem with doing it. In fact, I support it a hundred percent.
Right.
I just don't want...
And that's why...
The last thing we need is bad morale in other buildings, because one person is being singled out or placed into that position. I don't think that's fair to the others.
Right. I understand, and that's why my building-level principals make those requests of me. If they can justify it, we move forward. I've had several people request pay raises, additional hours, and in my opinion, they didn't meet the criteria. I do believe this one does. That's why I'm bringing it to the board tonight.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm voting opposed only because of the data, not because of the position of the person or the school.
Okay, motion carries four to one. And then number two?
Yes, we have the first reading this evening of the proposed change to Board Policy sixty-two fifty, required A D M counts for the purpose of state funding and verification of residency for membership. This policy is already in place, but we are proposing some changes to Section H in order for us to meet this requirement. And this was something the state passed two years ago. We now must be able to provide them proof of our students' residency. So if it is agreeable with the board, I would just like to do the first reading of the proposed changes, which are all under Section H of Board Policy sixty-two fifty, which is available online if you'd like to check it out. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
I thought you could live anywhere.
Under Section H, the board requires the following as documentation of proof of residency for its students. With limited exceptions set forth below, the board must select, I'm going to say the board, we'll leave that out, exceptions set forth below, and there's four things under current policy, these are the proposed changes. One, a current utility telephone bill dated sixty days of student enrollment, or, two, a current driver's license dated sixty days of student enrollment, or, three, a current bank statement dated sixty days of student enrollment, or, four, a current mortgage statement dated sixty days of student enrollment, or, five, a current loan application dated sixty days of student enrollment, or, six, a current rental lease agreement dated sixty days of student enrollment, or, seven, a current vehicle registration dated sixty days of student enrollment, or, eight, a current voter registration dated sixty days of student enrollment, or, nine, other current document that clearly states name and address dated sixty days of student enrollment. This is simply the first reading of the proposed changes, so there is no board action to be taken this evening. If the board so desires, we can place this on the March agenda for a second reading, and after the second reading, the board can either approve or not approve the proposed changes. And we try to be very flexible with our parents. That's why we give the nine different options. This is a substantial requirement of the state, and it does hold a financial penalty if we don't. So it's important for the public to know. So I know we set things out for the schools. We really need to get all of our students proof of residency.
And since there's no action on that, we can go on to number three.
Absolutely.
In your board packet, you'll find a proposed agreement with the Exceptional Children's Co-op for July one, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This two-year proposed agreement is similar to past agreements and outlines our inclusion and membership in the Special Ed Co-op. I recommend the board approve their agreement as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve it?
A motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number four?
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a request from F F A advisor, Mr. Andrew Hagan, to take a field trip to the Farm Machinery Show in Louisville, Kentucky on February the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. It's a great learning experience for our students and will allow them to access the latest technologies in agriculture, as well as opportunities to network with other F F A chapters in Indiana and Kentucky. I recommend the board approve his request as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
A motion. Go ahead. I'll second it, George.
Okay, George makes the motion, second by Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number five?
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a request from South Spencer Band Director, Mr. Greg Keith, for the band acquire to travel to Sandusky, Ohio, and spend a day at Cedar Point. I just wonder why I didn't get that by... I love Cedar Point. The following day, the students will travel to Cleveland, Ohio, and visit the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame before traveling home that evening. This trip is over summer break, so students will not be missing school. I recommend the board approve the trip as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by George, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number six?
Thank you. In your board packet, Mr. Dean Schip has provided you a summary of all quotes to provide mowing services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five mowing seasons, and a recommendation to award said quotes. I recommend the board award the mowing services quoted for high school and middle school to D J M Mowing for one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a mow. The mowing services for Rockport Elementary to J and S Mowing for three hundred and sixty-five dollars a mow. The mowing services for Loose Elementary to Robinson Landscape and Nursery for two hundred and eighty dollars a mow, and the quote for the administration building to Robinson Landscape and Nursery for eighty-five dollars a mow as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I have a motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second? Is there a discussion?
So we can have discussion?
We usually do discussion after a second. So you can take a second just to be able to call a vote, but then someone, you can ask for discussion at that point. No one wants to second anyone.
Or does it die for lack of a second?
Okay, I'll second it, and then we can have a discussion.
Good.
Ready?
Ready.
All right, I just, I had a tough time with this, just knowing that we had a guy here that's put in nineteen years' worth of mowing it with no complaints, that's been through both elementary schools, going through renovations, having to deal with that sort of thing. It's just something I couldn't get fully behind. I understand the money part of it, and it's not against any of these people personally. It's just where my heart was at, you know, and I just, I felt like I couldn't do a disjustice to that person for the years that they put in. I was nine or ten, you know, whenever you started mowing this. So that's, that's kind of where I fell. That's why I didn't make a motion or second myself.
I agree with Tyler, because the past three years, the fuel inflation and all that other stuff, he never once asked for more money for compensation or anything. he never once asked for more money for compensation or anything like that, but then again, we don't consider him for one of the jobs.
I, I, I don't, don't, I mean, we did consider them, I mean, we understand, we considered all the proposals that we got. We're simply recommending to you the best prices for the services being rendered. Alright, so I mean, this is not, this is, I understand what you're saying, and I can do that, because, I mean, I'm not from here. I don't know any of these individuals. And there's nothing in the law that says you have to take the low bid, that typically, if you're not gonna take the low bid, you have some rationale as to why you're selecting a higher bid, or a quote in this case. Just that everyone understands.
Yeah.
Does, does anybody else have discussion on this? If, no, I, I do. My thoughts on it, I, I agree with Tyler and George on the longevity and the support of the individual that we're discussing. I will also say that also, when you look at the taxpayer dollar, you have to look at that. But the reason why this is being done in a public meeting is this way, is because our board doesn't communicate. We shouldn't be making these type of determinations in a public meeting in front of people. We should be talking as a board if there's discussion items. And that's all I'm gonna say on it, at this time.
So are you guys recommending changing, um, two of the jobs to the original? To the other?
Yeah, man, I'm open for, for like what Matt said, and, and being able to discuss it and gonna go over everything with you all. If you wanna have the kind of communication and hash everything out that, that we're thinking between everybody.
Before we do anything, there's been a motion and a second, and we can't do anything until that either dies or that we modify it after it's died and re- re-propose it. Now, the issue is, you've got.
Let me, you actually have to have this discussion in a public meeting.
Right.
You can't have a meeting to talk about.
No, but you have, you can talk with the, the president, that can reach out to each board member to get our input way before we got into this, into this meeting.
You can do that, but, but at this point now, the only option you have is either move forward with the vote, or someone can move to table it to the next meeting, if you choose to do that, or you have to pull the motion.
Because the other piece of this that is on here is, these are all local businesses. Now you put their name out there, they're the lowest bidder, and you're saying, well, sorry, you're not who we want. And that's not professional.
That has happened in the past.
I mean, and I agree, everything's been fine, but I, I guess I'm just looking at the numbers again, too. I mean, I had a hard time at first, and I asked for a lot of information, and it's, so it is, it's comes down to dollars and cents. Alright, so so would you rather table and have more discussion, or do you want to?
I'm fine with tabling it, um, maybe the rates can be negotiated possibly, I, I don't know if that's an option. It's gonna be difficult since.
You can, someone would have to make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table.
Yeah, shouldn't, shouldn't they have voted the first thing before they tabled it?
Since there was a second, I think you have to take it to them.
You can take the vote, but.
It needs to die in vote.
Or you can pull your motion to, being the person who made the motion. So I can pull my motion on this? You can't, do you want? Okay, I would like to pull my motion on this agenda item, please.
Okay, so then can I get a motion to table it?
I'll make the motion to table it.
A second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
The, the only thing that I would like to recommend or throw out there is that, again, I don't know if this is Mr. Schneider's responsibility or Dean's responsibility of reaching out to, um, the business, the other, um, candidate, maybe negotiate the rates more, um, if that is the big factor, um, not only the, the business, um, the years of business that we have with this business, I get that and I respect that, um, but maybe those rates can be negotiated. I don't know if that's an option.
That's why you do quotes, guys.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why you ask for quotes, you, you give it your best price, and then our job is to make a recommendation to board, and you're the ones that end up hiring, so I, I personally would not feel comfortable going back unless we just said, we're gonna throw these out and rebid it. But I, I don't feel it's appropriate to start negotiating quotes and bids, because where does that, where does that end? I mean, I, that, you're, you're treading on, you're, that's, I don't, I've never done business that way, I don't intend on starting that now. These, these were all given in good faith, uh, I know Mr. Ship reached out multiple times to make sure they were interested and understood what they were bidding. So I think what we have here, I think these are legitimate quotes. I think the people that gave the quotes have a good history with South Spencer, I don't think there's anyone that, when Mr. Ship and I spoke, that we had concerns, couldn't get the job done. So we recommended the lowest bidders based upon the fact that they've done this work as well, and they've done good work for us, and so, s- my two cents on it. But I would not feel comfortable going back.
I agree to negotiate.
Agreed.
I respect that. Okay, so the motion to table is still on the floor, let's take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so we'll table this till next month. And then number seven?
Alright. In your board packet, you will find a list of checks that are outstanding and have been so for more than two years. The State Board of the Council recommends those checks be declared void and canceled. I recommend board declare the list of checks as void and cancel them as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second Tyler's motion.
Motion, Matt, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have consideration of personnel recommendations, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you. The first recommendation is Jill Gross, Loose Elementary Health Aid, effective January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. I guess I need to stop, because we did say, if there, and, is there a name on this list you would not like to include?
No.
Hearing and seeing none. The second recommendation is Megan Boreman, Loose Elementary Teachers Aid, effective February the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And the third position is Allison Basham, Loose Elementary Teachers Aid, effective February the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by George, a second?
A second.
Second by Melissa, um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh. We did have some informational items that were written reports to the board, that included the technology report, the maintenance report, the transportation report, and the new volunteers report. And then, do we have any statements or concerns of the board?
I do. It goes right along with what happened earlier in the meeting regarding the administrative recommendation for the mowing services. Where, where to start? We don't communicate as a board. We don't know our roles as a board. Our job is not administrative recommendations, that's Mr. Schneider's. We put him in a very uncomfortable position this evening, which is unfortunate. Mr. Schneider mentioned the strategic plan that was put together by, uh, some principals and teachers, yet this board has no goals. Uh, for the last twenty-five months, we've had no goals. I would ask our past two board presidents to provide me board goals. What's our, what's our objective? What's the purpose of our board? It's never been voiced. Strategic plan has been shared with us, not discussed, but it's been shared with us. I'm not a fan of everything in it. I think the community won't be a fan of everything in it. I think it shows that the corporation is not cohesive as a group, because no board member was involved in any strategic plan for the corporation, which I think is unfortunate. So, the next thing on my item, uh, going down checklist here, just making some notes. You know, here we are, eight months in to Mr. Schneider's first year here, we don't, still don't know how we're gonna evaluate him. We had a meeting and discussed a couple of things, and asked him to provide us goals. We've never discussed those goals, we've never said, that's what we're gonna use, we haven't talked about a rubric or any type of standardized testing, and you know, if you go to any other school system and you say, hey, you got a superintendent who's been here eight months, and within four months, you're gonna evaluate him on his livelihood, and he doesn't know what he's gonna be evaluated on? Shame on us! I'm sorry, Mr. Schneider, this should've been handled a long time ago. I want smart goals, I wanna know what system we're using to evaluate him so that he knows, we know, the taxpayer, parent, child, teach, teachers and staff need to know what we're holding them accountable to. We don't know. I mean, if you were to go to North Spencer and say the same thing that's going on there, or as a teacher, Janet, if you said, hey, I'm eight months into my year, and I'm gonna be evaluated at the end of my year by my principal, what's that look like? I think that's crazy! Next one, last month, we had some administrative appointments. We put Tyler Herman on the Legislative Committee. Has anybody given you any advisement or direction as to how that's, what's involved in that?
The, uh, attorney that was here last minute told me a little bit about it, I've got some emails.
So, no one here on this board met with you and gave you any direction or advisement as to what that looks like?
Correct.
Pitiful! We need leadership. We're a sixteen to eighteen million dollar corporation, let's start functioning like it. If you need help, ask other corporations, ask our current superintendent. Our taxpayers, the employees of this school corporation, from principals to teachers to superintendent to bus drivers, the parents, the students, all deserve better from us. Shame on us! We need to start leading. This stuff of zero communication, now I sent Mr. Schneider a question regarding the position from seven to eight hours. Mr. Schneider took my email and forwarded it to your board members and gave you information. From January one to today, I've not received that from any other board member up here. And that's not to single any of you out, it's just to say, are you not engaged? Are you not communicating with other board members? And this just doesn't start January, this goes way back. Our people in this corporation deserve better, and that's my comments.
Any other board comments or concerns?
Just remember, this is our board, the public is in attendance. This isn't to appeal to the people in the room, this is us conducting business, we meet once a month. I can't tell you the last time I got a phone call from a board member. I, I'd have to go back and, and really do some heavy searching to find that information out, and that's unfortunate.
So with our evaluation system, he knows that we're evaluating on the rubric for ISBA. He has given us his goals and how we are going to be able to measure them. All of that is going to be discussed at our work session on Thursday, as well as our new, um, the board training. So I'm not sure where you're going with that, but.
So I can, the only thing, the only thing I got for Thursday evening is a governance meeting. And that's put on by the ISBA.
He was also sharing the strategic plan with us at that point.
The strategic plan has nothing to do with his evaluation. He's given us three goals, we have not looked at or discussed those goals in terms of if we're okay with what those goals are. And Mr. Schneider is affirming that by shaking his head, it's not been done. We're sitting here kicking the can down the road, you're looking at nine or ten months into a year. You're gonna give this guy a, a evaluation based on less than ninety days of work? Or gonna go back and prodate the stuff before we tell him what he's being evaluated on?
I think if I had a problem with whenever he emailed us our goals, that's whenever I would've sent the email out and said, hey, we need to talk about this one, or we'll talk about that one. I read through him and didn't personally see anything wrong with him myself, and that's why I've been.
Well, I know, but the way this, this should work is we should be communicating with each other, because there are things that I have questions about. And I don't wanna get in front of a public meeting like we did tonight and hang someone out there to, to dry. That's unfortunate, not the way it should be done.
Well, I will say the law works both ways, so if you have something that you wanna ask me or that you wanna discuss, you could call me, too. I don't always have to reach out to everybody.
Janet, I reach out to you and Mr. Schneider often, and you know that I send you two emails. You two are the ones that I send. I'm not gonna email as a quorum the board, because when you start discussing questions, you run into that risk of gray areas as to whether or not you're conducting business in a quorum in writing. So I run that all through my board president and the superintendent.
So whenever he answers all of those emails and gives you your information, what do you expect me to do?
No, I've asked about.
I, I don't know.
I've asked about.
Because if he gives you the information, I don't know what more than you want.
I think, as we met the last time to discuss his evaluation, we didn't come up with a decision, there was not a discussion.
Because we were waiting on his goals, which he did that, what, a couple weeks ago, month ago?
Okay, so what we're gonna do is.
And then I really did think we were doing that at our work session, talking about it.
Yes.
And if not, then let me know, because I, that would be a difference. And we talked about doing it in May, like at the end of the year, like most other school corporations do. So I guess I was waiting on the goal discussion, because he had it all lined out for us, and then we can discuss that as a group.
And the board training on Thursday with Mr. Horton and ISBA should be able to address a lot of these questions, Matt. I mean, that's, uh, it's an executive session, because it's training, so that will be an opportunity for the board to have these conversations.
Well, I, I ask that that be put into the agenda for that.
Yes, it's in there.
Thank you.
I, I mean, this, this work session is for the five of you.
I agree.
You did the self-assessments, he has those results, he's gonna talk about that, but this is training, so whether it's communication, policy setting, governance, I mean, whatever you wanna talk about, those are all things he's gonna talk about. And again, he's prepared to discuss any concerns or questions that you may have as a board, because that's, that's the goal of this, is to get boards to function at a higher level, so.
Agreed.
Alright, any other statements? Our next meeting date, um, of our regular meeting will be Monday, March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at six P M here in the Walter Purpose Room at the high school. And time to adjourn, seven oh three, can I get a motion?
Aye.
Motion by George, a second?
I'll second George's motion.
Second by Matt, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh, meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Schneider, can I ask a quick question? How come the state, I thought kids could go to whatever school the parents chose or whatever, why are they making schools prove, corporations prove residency?
Great question, Kathy, and that law was passed because there were certain sections of the state, AKA the northeast corner, that was accepting students, kids from Ohio and Michigan. And the state of Indiana doesn't wanna use your taxpayer dollars to educate kids, and we, since we are just over the bridge.
Yeah, from Kentucky.
The odds of them coming to us and asking for our documentation is gonna be pretty high, so we, we wanna make sure we're.
Yeah, I just was sitting there thinking, why didn't, you know, I thought they made it so you could go wherever.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, it's, it's because kids kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a couple years ago, they thought our, they thought A D M count was too high, so that was.